It's available free of charge. It's, 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 there's no charge to the, to the taxpayers. There's no charge to the individuals. It's funded through a private foundation that you're all familiar with, I'm sure. The R.C. Durr Foundation, through the Health Department and many other partners involved, to provide that, that medication and this training. So I want to provide that. I want to, I want to walk you through that in just a minute. But I, I really want to touch, just briefly, on what Chief Whitaker mentioned, and that is that we are experiencing an amount of fatigue in our first responders that is, is unfortunately a unforeseen consequence of some previous legislation that has gone through Senate Bill 192, the heroin bill. We introduced what was called a Good Samaritan provisions. And that allowed for immunity from arrest and prosecution for controlled substances and paraphernalia that are directly related to an overdose if someone calls 911 and if they stay with the, the overdose victim. Now, that's a front-end system that's working. We're seeing law enforcement respond. We're seeing people make that call. They're not hesitating anymore, right? That's, that was the spirit of that law, was to keep people from hesitating, from calling 911 in the event of an overdose. Because if I got to search for this guy's drugs and, and find the needle and hide it before I call 911, he's likely going to die before I, before they even get here. So the spirit of that law is working. First responders are showing up. They're using Narcan. They're saving lives. So we've got this front-end system that's working really well. What we don't have is that catalyst into the, into the treatment system, right? We don't have that catalyst. So these QRT teams, what Chief Whitaker mentioned and what many other agencies are providing, and hopefully more in the future, is the answer. Now, we've got, will we respond to these, to these households with a CADC, a Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor, with law enforcement and with a, a medical, hopefully a, a first responder of some kind, and provide assessments on the spot and get these folks into treatment as quickly as possible. Now, I want to take that even a step further, and this, this session, we're going to, we're, we're going to introduce some legislation that will provide some authority to these QRT teams to, once an individual, now, they're refusing medical treatment on the spot. As, as Amanda mentioned, they're not in the best shape at the time. They're going to refuse the medical treatment. Now, when the QRT team responds and asks them if they want help, now, they're, they may refuse again, and they may refuse again, but I would like to see law enforcement to give some of that discretion back to law enforcement. They're frustrated. We're frustrated because we can't intervene like we used to and make that arrest. Ninety percent of the men and women in our program at the jail, if you ask them if they would be alive today if they had not been arrested, they would say no. Across the board, they would be dead if they had not been arrested. So we need to give our law enforcement the authority to order someone into treatment if, if there's just cause for it. So I'm, I, I would like to propose that in, in this session, and I, I would ask for your support, that if you see a piece of legislation that pops up that would warrant, give law enforcement the discretion with QRT teams to order someone into treatment, involuntary treatment order, much like another order we have in, in, in the state of Kentucky, to provide, to give someone the chance that they need to get into recovery. Now, this would be mandated through the courts. It would, it would also involve putting them into a 72-hour hold at the hospital while the order was being processed through the courts, but through the law enforcement personnel, determining that this individual is actually a danger to themselves or others, because they responded three times to that house or five times to that house, and with the CADC saying that we've diagnosed this person and assessed them for substance use disorder, we can convince a judge to order them into the appropriate level of care and to one of our treatment providers. Okay, now, I'm over already. But I also want to share, before, before I go into the, the Lockson demonstration, that, you know, recovery is possible. We're, there's, there's a lot more people in this community that are, are part of the recovery movement than, than you know, and I'm one of them. I, I'm happy to say that, that I'm in recovery. I've been, I've been sober now for, going on nine years. April 16th, 2009. April 16th, 2009, I found myself at the Grateful Life Center, right here in Earl. Recovery. I lived there for 13 months and one day. And that's important, because that was not a time that was decided on by an insurance company. That was not a time decided on by anyone but me, a group of my peers and my counselors at the facility, at the Grateful Life Center, at Transition's Grateful Life Center. So I, I hope that you'll continue to support these programs. I know that, that you all are passionate about this, or you wouldn't be here. So just keep that in mind, that, that, that when given the right type of treatment for the right amount of time, sometimes we can go on to do some pretty amazing things. And one of those things is being able to provide the service prevention training for you, which I'm going to, I'm going to ask both of you out here. Will you mind helping me pull this table over here? We can get this one. Thank you, guys. So, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, and while, while we're doing the question-and-answer portion of the town hall, if you want to take a kit home, I'll give you a packet to fill out while we're doing question-and-answer. You can fill that out. I'll probably move this table back over here, and I'll be sitting there, putting the kits together. When you get that paperwork filled out, just come on up to me or pass it down the road, and I'll, I'll make sure that your kit gets issued to you. All right? So what we're talking about here is an opiate overdose situation, right? That's what we're seeing in our streets today. Heroin, unfortunately, is, is almost gone. Heroin is not really hard to see anymore. It's, it's fentanyl, it's carfentan. Our cartels, the people who are making these drugs, have switched from an agriculturally-based product to a chemically-based product. It's 10 to 100 times stronger than heroin, much more deadly. I'm happy to say that pharmaceutical companies that have produced Narcan for us in the past have also upped the strength of the Narcan that's available on the street. So these kits that you can get tonight are twice the strength of the previous formula. Now, what I'm going to talk to you about are, first, there's three steps to this. It's calling 911, getting rescue breathing, and administering Narcan. If you can remember those three things, then you can save a life from a fatal overdose situation. Calling 911, administering Narcan. Calling 911, getting rescue breathing, and then administering Narcan. All right? So what you're going to see in this individual in an overdose state is discoloration. You're going to notice that their skin is changing colors, their lips maybe blue or gray, their, they might hear shortness of breath, perhaps with on reversion, I hate this term, but people call it the death rattle. It's a deep snoring, gurgling sound, they're struggling to breathe, or they're getting no breath at all. So obviously, they're in distress, they need help right away, so it's imperative that you act quickly. Within four minutes, they can experience permanent brain damage. Within eight minutes, they could be dead. So the first thing we want to do is determine that they are unresponsive. We can do that a couple of very intuitive ways, where you say, hey, are you okay? You're in a little shape. If they do not respond, a sternum bump recommended. A firm fist, knuckles out, rock back and forth on that sternum bump. You can do that yourself. It produces painful stimulation. If they're able to respond to that, good, keep them under observation. And, and if they don't, then you can, you can pretty much say that they are unresponsive, and that's when you want to help them. Right away, when you notify first responders that you suspected overdose has occurred, then please send help. Now, what's happening in the brain and in the body of this individual is that the opiates are bonded to the receptors that control the central nervous system. That's the respiratory system. So their lungs are going to shut down, they're going to stop breathing. As a result of no oxygen in the bloodstream, they will go into cardiac arrest very quickly. They'll go into a coma, and then they will die. So we have to respond by getting the oxygen into the bloodstream first. All right? And we do that through rescue breaths, rescue breathing. You want to situate the individual, where you can work on him. You want to visually check the airway, make sure there's nothing blocking, no gum or food or pills or anything in their mouth. If there is, your kit will come in a plastic package, it needs as a glove. You can reach in their mouth and pull it out. Giving rescue breaths can be tiresome, so it's important, it could be important for you to identify someone that could help you, say, hey, can you help me out? Maybe go wait for the paramedics. I need your Narcan kit, I need you to call 911, I need you to stay with me, so we can switch off doing rescue breaths back and forth. You want to give rescue breaths for 30 seconds, one breath every five seconds for 30 seconds. Deep, a deep, calm breath. This is where you're just going to need to slow down and give them a nice, big breath of one every five seconds for 30 seconds. And we want to make sure that the airway's open, so you're going to have to tilt their head back. You can put two fingers on their chin and on the forehead, push, push their chin back. That opens up the airway, you'll pinch the nose. In each kit, you're going to find a CPR shield that's going to protect you from any, any hazards that might be on or around their, their mouth area. And it also has a one-way valve on it, Narcan, and no, probably, it induces a weak withdrawal. They're probably going to get sick once this stuff takes effect, so using this CPR shield is, is very important. 30 seconds, one breath every five seconds for 30 seconds. And then, you'll get out of the box that's in this kit. You'll open it up, it has two doses of Narcan in it. You can come in this little blister pack, you simply pop it open, it's very intuitive, very easy to use, it fits between your, between two fingers and your thumb. You'll insert this up the nostril, you'll push down with your thumb, and here a quick click, a burst, the medication will be administered up the nasal cavity. It's absorbed through the tiny blood vessels in the nose. They don't need to be breathing for this stuff to work. It goes right into the bloodstream, it's where it needs to go. It could take up to two minutes, though, to get into those receptors and remove that heroin or opiates from those receptors to restore the breathing. So after you administer that first dose, set it aside and continue with rescue breathing until one of three things happens. Either they start breathing on their own, help shows up, or two minutes goes by. Two minutes goes by, you're going to do out that second dose and do it again, same thing. And then continue with rescue breathing until either help shows up or they start breathing on their own. If they begin to breathe on their own, they'll probably start gasping, they're just coughing, spitting up, but they may not be conscious yet. So it's very important that you roll them over on their side until they regain consciousness. Whatever coming out of their mouth might go up the floor and not back down their throat, where they could aspirate. All right? When they do regain consciousness, I'm sure many of you in this room could attest to violent reactions that often occur. Generally, it's because of the environment that they wake up to, up into. You might want to give a little space, just explain to them, hey, we just, we just survived with the Lockson. I know that you're sick right now, but this stuff wears off 30 to 90 minutes, they'll feel better. Narcan, we're all, hopefully, the body's metabolizing, metabolizing up the substances so they don't go back to overdose. But if they do, you've got that second dose in here to keep them breathing until it all shows up. So it's non-toxic, okay? And it doesn't hurt. It doesn't do, it doesn't hurt anybody. Only, only affects opiates. It doesn't work on crack or meth or any other drug, just opiates, okay? It lights them up at room temperature. So if you get a kit, open it in the fridge, don't leave it in the car on a cold night or on a hot summer day. You want to keep it either in your bag or, or close to you, at a centralized location, maybe in your house or at your agency. And everyone's covered, no liability. You're not, you're not liable criminally or, or facility with, with the use of FDA for a medication. It could save someone's life, it's covered in Kentucky statute. So I'll pull out that paperwork, those you're going to want it, as we go into the question-and-answer portion of the question. So, I was asked to explain what kind of information we're going to ask for, if you want to get a Narcan kit. So, this is a prescribed medication. All of the information is stored confidentially at my office at the Health Department. So what I do need is your name, the zip code in which you live, and there is a research component to this, so if you're willing to be part of our research project, there are two or three pages to fill out. But on the first page, all I really, all I need is your name and your zip code and then your signature. And that's the only, only thing I absolutely need. The rest is voluntary. You'll see when I hand you the packet, there's three or four pages of located information and baseline survey information. So if you'd like to be part of the research study, you can. We'd appreciate it, but it's not, it's not absolutely necessary.
So Jason, one question that I had while you were saying that, and just to be clear, is so if somebody had gotten a hold of, or if a child got a hold of the Narcan and sprayed it in their nose or in their mouth, that it would not be harmful?
That's a good question. It is non-toxic.
Okay.
You cannot overdose on it. It will not hurt someone. There are very rare cases of possible seizure or cardiac event, but it's, it's mainly due to polysub, multiple substances in the body. So if you've got a lot of stimulants in the body, and then you take, take heroin or opiates to, to calm down, you take away those opiates, the heart rate increases, and you might have a cardiac event or a seizure activity. But it has absolutely no effect on someone who's not on opiates.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
And, you know, that brings up, if I might, if I may, just...
Go ahead, please.
It's, it's interesting, children, right? Medication, might think it's candy. A child could ingest pills by accident. You could save their life with Narcan. People who, who might be suicidal, going for the medicine cabinet, they, they take a bottle of pills, you could save someone's life with Narcan. And this, the flu season's coming, colds, coughs. If you have a respiratory issue going on and you're taking regularly prescribed pain medication, that could induce respiratory arrest. Technically, an overdose state, you could reverse that with Narcan. I, I firmly believe that it's so safe and so available right now, it should be part of everyone's medicine cabinet, everyone's first aid kit. So I hope that you'll, you'll be willing to, to take my point today. Thank you. Expiration, these are good until June of 19th. I've got a little timeline.
Sorry. All right, so, you know, I know some of the things that I've been hearing over and over this evening, some of the words are "hope." We've heard that a lot tonight, and I've heard "help" a lot tonight. So, you know, I know, we've got a couple of questions here, and I would love to encourage more people to, to ask any question you might have. A lot of people say, "The only bad question is the one that's not asked." So, one question here was, and I, I think this may be directed to Jason, regarding the SAP program. How do you define success? And what is the success rate?
Sure, sure, yeah. So we define success first of all, like, getting incarcerated, right? People get re-armed, they get arrested again, and what we're seeing, what we're seeing is that men and women that complete our program are 70% less likely to come back to jail in the first year after their release. So 71% of our clients that complete our program do not come back to jail in the first year. 63% of our clients have safe, affordable housing. 80% are employed, at least part-time, and that's 12 months after release. But those are just a few of the data points that we gather. We also look at the decreased level of anxiety and suicidality and depression. We also look at our, their financially, being financially responsible for their families and for their children. They're, they're spending most of their time with family and children. So we're, and I don't know if you're familiar with the national average of recidivism, but it's opposite, it's flipped. For those that aren't in programming, they're 70% more likely to be in jail within the first 12 months after release. So, another interesting point that we've collected is a data, a cost analysis. For every dollar we spend on our program and programs like ours in Kentucky, there's a $4.50 cost offset. So $4.50 for every dollar we spend, it goes back into pension, into schools, into roads, into, into whatever we decide, you know, whatever we need in our, in our state.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, Jason, you're, you're very popular here. So we've got a couple of other questions. This is a great one. Sometimes people don't want to do rescue breathing. Is it okay to call 911 and then use the Narcan?
Anything's better than nothing. I'll say that. You know, I, I'm not certified to, to, to train anyone in CPR, but if you are CPR certified, you can go into full-blown CPR. Or, I mean, just give it a Narcan, call 911, it's, it's, it's better than nothing. The evidence-based recommended response is call 911, rescue breathing, and Narcan. But if you, anything's better than nothing. I'll just go back to that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so then I, then I think we have a few that would be open to the entire panel. One question, how can we help with prevention? Anybody want to tackle that?
I feel like a lot of us could respond to this one. As I was saying earlier, we have identified children that were at risk. And when I say high risk, I mean all of these, like ACE scores that we were saying, domestic violence, substance use in the home, mental health, mental illness. There's social behavioral relational issues that, that all manifest, you know, as a result of trauma, as a result of their environment that they were exposed to, as a, as a result of, you know, parents' substance use, parents being incarcerated. So what, what we're doing on our end is we're asking you to identify these, these participants and, and send them to us, and let us do our assessment and be able to treat them anywhere within the spectrum. Because, you know, those, those numbers are not coincidence. You know, that 80% of the, the substance users, and again, which I, I think is higher, have that trauma or have that co-occurring disorder. And this stuff is treatable, and I know how to treat it, and clinicians that I work with know how to treat it. So if we can catch it earlier, that gives us a much higher chance before it, it spreads into addiction, because addiction doesn't just happen overnight. It happens with, as I was saying, the, the seeking of relief, the seeking of, of pleasure and feeling okay, and just trying to avoid that pain. So that pain underlying is, is what we're trying to get to the bottom to, and we use a lot of psychoeducation. We use cognitive behavioral therapies, play therapies of all different ages, quite a few different substance use approaches we use. We use seven challenges, and I, again, I don't know if you guys are familiar with any of these, but I'm happy to explain them to you. But again, be in the schools and allow people to have psychoeducation. This whole, like, abstinence, like, driving, like, drugs don't work, and, and the dare, that's not necessarily proven to be effective. So what we're doing is we're trying to go in and, and, and treat the underlying symptoms, because I believe that the substance use is a symptom. I believe that defiance is a symptom, criminal behavior is a symptom, you know, isolation, withdrawal, all of these clinical terms that I can, that I can drop. But, you know, that the symptoms that look like ADHD, a lot of times, that is, you know, trauma, and again, it's part of a cycle, and it is a family disease addiction is. So what we're doing is we're trying to, to look at all different pieces and, and again, you know, start at as young as five and at least provide psychoeducation and effective coping skills, communication, all the way up to, you know, treating the family, incorporating them into the treatment, and even doing one-on-one, we're even offering couples therapy, because a lot of times whenever we have a substance-using adolescent, it's, you know, it's bleeding, it's permeating within the entire home, which of course, the discord, you know, bleeds and manifests as mental health. So from, from our perspective, like, we, I mean, we don't even have a waiting list right now, which is bizarre, because, I mean, we've, we've, we're in a lot of different places, we're, we're trying to respond to the needs. So I would say, just from our perspective, just if you have a suspicion or if you think a kid's high-risk, as I said, Valencia's taking kids who, you know, are identified as substance use in the home, has any of these, you know, precursors that we were talking about, domestic violence, neglects, like, it's, I don't think it's ever too soon. Very rarely does somebody come and we just say, we just turn them away. I mean, if they do fall within normal functioning ranges, we absolutely do, you know, just, you know, kind of give them some education and connection to resources. But a lot of this stuff is treatable, and, you know, as I've heard so many testimonies of, of addicts and alcoholics and people who just fall within the range of substance use, you know, some, somewhere on there, there's, there's symptoms, like impulsivity, lack of safety awareness. And again, all this stuff is treatable. It's just due to, you know, taboo issues or, or secrets, or due, or due to lack of awareness, people just don't know that, that this is available, but it, it is. So, and, and it's, you know, starting from, you know, young adolescents all the way up to, you know, transitions, you know, treating adults, and the services they offer are amazing. I'm, I'm super glad to hear that in the community, but that's from, from my perspective.
I, I'd like to add just a little bit. Some of the things that we're doing in prevention around folks is, we're having these conversations of, you know, heroin, sometimes heroin use will start with heroin, but a lot of times it's starting with using drugs before that. You know, maybe it's alcohol, maybe it's marijuana, you know, so if you're, you are a parent in your home and you're letting your child drink, not all these folks are going to go down the road of heroin, but, but it may start that road early. So what we're looking at is, you know, we're looking at SAMSS website and looking at, how do you talk to your kids? And there's actually sheets here, and your Kenton County Prevention Alliance is here. Mary, raise your hand. She's in the schools, and she's working some of these strategies. She has tips about how do you, how do you talk to your kids about these things? How do you say these things? I have Bonnie Hedrick. Bonnie, wave your, wave your hand there. She's one of another prevention person that we have in our community at St. Elizabeth. And, and we're looking at these prevention, they're all part of our, our task force. But before we get to the, the road of heroin, which some people start there, but most likely they don't, so we want to talk to our kids about this before we get there. These programs are in your school, we want to support these schools. We now have schools that are having drug-free clubs, and they're actually volunteering to do drug-free testing. One of the things we want to do with the task force is connect this to workforce. Let's have these employers pay for this testing, because the more folks that we can keep off the drugs, and that's going to feed back into our workforce. Because again, we're looking at this kind of holistic approach and how this feeds into it. And that's just a tiny little tidbit, and, and my experts can go in to my, that more detail. But before you leave, stop by the tables out there, and there are some sheets that give you some tips about coping skills, about how do you talk to your kids about this, and then a list of websites that you can go to, to get some more information about some of this stuff.
I think another thing was, I'm sorry, was you mentioned the ACE study. I think that's very important. It, the adverse childhood experiences, I think that we, especially with our moms, if you are, if you're treating the mother and we're identifying the trauma that, you know, what her score is, what child, you know, if there was alcohol, drugs, poverty, whatever her score is, if we're treating, treating that mother, then ultimately, we're treating her child. Because if we're, if we're stopping that cycle, then we're preventing that from happening again. So the intervention with the mother is ultimately affecting that child, and, and so that's not happening again. That's one point. And the second point is, at St. Elizabeth, you know, physician education, you know, not, not prescribing opiates to patients on, that it's not needed. You know, maybe a mom comes in for a C-section, and she, maybe she has a history of, you know, substance use, or whatever that looks like. But educating the doctors, the physicians, to know when to prescribe, when to prescribe up, instead of, you know, they should be prescribing down, not up for, for certain procedures. So they're, you know, they're looking at that and doing physician education. So there are ways that we can do prevention on that, on that side as well.
What I was going to say is something I heard after I lost Casey, and that was, if you think something is wrong, there probably is, act now. Don't wait. And trust yourself as a parent to know your child better than anybody else does, and, and take action. Don't wait. The sooner you act, the better.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you. I think we touched on a little bit, as we were speaking about that, one of the other questions here. Can anyone speak about Kenton County Alliance to prevent substance abuse?
Mary's in the audience. Mary, would you talk a little bit about the Kenton County? I, I think she's the, one of the project managers, and she'd be the best person.
Kent County Alliance is a group of individuals throughout Kent County that are interested in doing some prevention work and some community work and making some changes within the community to make it a healthier community. Anybody's invited to attend our meetings, which are held the first Tuesday of every month. It's, it's, it's funded through a drug-free communities grant, and other funds help support that. And we work with all different sectors within the community, law enforcement, healthcare, parents, youth, religious, schools, and just try to hit the prevention methods that way. So it's, it's early intervention. We are focused on youth with the ultimate idea that it eventually affects adults. Most of the, most of the communities in, most of the counties in our area do have such coalitions, so please find out the names of those, get involved in them, help out, and we're doing some good work.
The term "public outreach" was mentioned a few times as well. Can, can, can you give a couple of examples of what is being done for public outreach?
I think this is an example of public outreach. We, a couple of members from St. Elizabeth spoke at the mayor's meeting, and from that meeting, we talked about town halls, and after that, we, this town hall was formed, and a few others as well. I know, at least from St. Elizabeth's perspective, we are trying to talk about, you know, any way we can, any time we can, about baby steps or things going on in the community. We, as, the members of baby steps, the nurses that are here tonight with myself, the three of us that work together, we go to community, the Hurt Meetings or the Interfaith Meeting. So we, we are trying to spread ourselves as far in the community as we can. And I know that at least for, for us, we try to talk about it with anybody that'll listen to us. So, you know, I, I think that this is a, is a testimony right here. You know, your community members have come out and showed their support and that there's a concern, so I think this right here is a great testimony to that.
I can add that the door hanger campaigns that we've had, Kenton County has been a leader in this, the Kenton County, the administration at Kenton County, they've really jumped in. They were the first county, you know, hundreds of volunteers came and hung hundreds and thousands of door hangers, and those are with the helpline, and the cards are, again, back on the tables. That's another form of outreach. back on the table. So that's another form of outreach. We have teams with different organizations that are going for, you know, we do have sex workers that are addicted to different substances. We have folks that are going out into the street, trying to reach them in the cold weather, giving them coats, building them relationships, trying to get them in treatment. I mentioned about the different dance clubs, trying to, we're looking at every angle. There's, the scope is so broad, and this is affecting every system, every neighborhood. You know, they did a study and, or a poll in our eight counties recently, where one in three people not only know somebody that's addicted to heroin or a substance, but a close immediate family member or friend. That's a lot of people in our communities. That's a lot of neighbors. That's a lot of family members. So a lot of these folks are suffering. And we are going into these neighborhoods with the door hangers. We're looking at organizations that people might need to do it, might need some resources. We're starting to talk about how are we going to reach the folks that may be working in restaurants, that might be exposed to different substances? How are we going to reach these folks? How are we going to get the information in their break rooms? So we're looking at all different forms of public outreach. And if you have an idea, then let us know. You know, we're looking at the employers who are now starting to hold meetings on site. What does that look like in a recovery community? So we're always looking for more opportunities, and then we're always looking for more partners. So if you have a business, you have a school, you have someplace that you go and visit, and you can think about where you can put some of these resources, or just a door hanger so people can get this number. And what that door hanger is, it's a 24/7 hotline that anyone can call and get resources and get connected. You know, if you're not calling transitions directly, which you can do that, you can call St. Elizabeth directly, but you can also call this one-stop shop and get connected to these resources. You know, I carry them in my car. I go down the street, I hand them out. Every time I go at a restaurant, I leave one. You never know who you can, who you might touch. But those are just a few examples.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Biding, we're going to put you on the spot with this question. Why doesn't the Grateful Life Center support faith-based programs?
Well, I think faith-based programs are very positive, very successful. I think it really depends on the individual. We incorporate a lot of faith-based things in all of our treatment programs that we have. I think 12-step meetings are, have a strong faith-based component to them. We do a lot of work with area churches. And so we welcome the faith-based community, and I think it's a very powerful tool. It's not the only part of treatment, but I think it's a good, it's a great component. Folks in early recovery, at times, I think, are spiritually bankrupt, is the kind of the term we use in treatment. So filling up that void in that spiritual bankrupt, spirituality is a huge part of recovery. So no, we're big fans of it. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. How is treating chemical dependency with chemicals solving a chemical dependency problem in our community? And how long are they given?
Medication-assisted treatment.
Oh, yeah. How long are they given? MAT, that's what, okay.
Yeah. Medication-assisted treatment is a phrase that's a little more popular now with opiates. Suboxone, methadone has been around probably a little bit longer. Suboxone's a little bit newer. These are medications, they work differently in the brain. And they've been proven to work, and again, it all depends on the individual. It's not a one, you know, you just don't say, oh, everybody needs medication. And you just treat everybody as an individual. Some people do very well in medication, some people don't. I think it's a, it's a nice tool to have. So, you know, we're fans of medication, and done the right way. But, you know, we've, I've seen it work wonders for people that, you know, some people need it. And sometimes it's short-term. It could be a month or two, and sometimes it could be much longer. Yeah, there's a stigma about it, to be perfectly honest, and there shouldn't be. Taking medication for any disease is, you know, it's perfectly normal. But done in the right way. You know, you just don't want to give everybody medication if they don't need it. So if it's done in the right way, it's individualized, it's monitored by professionals. It can be, I mean, it's very, it can be very therapeutic. So it's a good thing.
And medication-assisted treatment, as Jim said, is medication along with therapy. So if you're going to a physician that is treating the patient according to the correct guidelines that are mandated upon them by the, to the physician, that would mean that the patient is receiving medication with individual therapy, group therapy, IOP, and 12-step meetings. So, and their medication is tied to them being compliant with all of those things. So, for instance, if a patient were not compliant with their group therapy or their individual therapy, say they were missing appointments, were having positive urine drug screens for other substances, they would be placed on contract, and say maybe it happened again, then they might be on a first maybe behavioral contract, then whatever that looked like, placed by the doctor. And so their medication is tied to them being compliant with therapy, if it's done correctly. That's how it's intended to be done.
So I'd like to share just one thing about that, if I may.
Sure.
And we're talking about people that are at extreme risk for overdose, extreme risk for death by overdose. So what these medications do, the ones that it's appropriate for, is it stabilizes them. It keeps them alive, gets them engaged in, and gets them into the medical system under the supervision of a doctor, into these therapies that are required along with it. So we're taking somebody who's at extreme risk for overdose, using multiple times a day, they could die every single time they use. They're engaged in criminal activity because they're trying to come up with resources to cope with these withdrawal symptoms and self-medicate. We get them engaged into a program that induces them on medication. Immediately, they're in a better financial state, because they're not the others trying to rob and steal to get the resources to continue to buy illicit substances. They're stabilized under the supervision of a physician, and they're engaged in therapy. So it really is a win-win-win across the board, when it's done right. Now, these programs, methadone, for example, has been notoriously mismanaged around the nation for a long time. So it's got a bad record. But I can tell you why methadone is more appropriate for our most vulnerable and our highest-risk populations, is because you got to go to the clinic every day to get your dose. With suboxone or Subitex, that's more appropriate for people who are more stable, who are showing those, the signs of recovery, are showing the signs of stabilization. Methadone, suboxone, Subitex can be diverted, right? They can go to the doctor, get seven-day supply, and then sell it or trade it. And if they're unstable, if they're in really early recovery, then that's not necessarily appropriate. You want them to have to go every day, so they have to be under observation to take that dose. So methadone, that's why methadone's the gold standard for the highest risk, the highest risk-for-death population. That's kind of how it fits into our community and what we're looking at. And it's really, it's all about opiate use disorder. It's not, you know, you don't treat alcohol use disorder with methadone. You don't treat a, you know, crystal meth habit with methadone. You only treat opiate use disorder with these forms of medication that we're talking about. Thanks.
Thank you. So it's a tool in the toolbox, but not necessarily the first tool that's grabbed. Is that an easy way of saying it? Well, I don't have any other questions that, okay, yeah, please. Sure.
The first one's directed to Jason and Teri. Twenty-five years ago, my uncle was addicted to drugs and alcohol and hit rock bottom, and he was not ready for treatment. So they admitted him to the hospital with a 72-hour hold. Once his hold was up, he got out and he committed suicide. So my question is, I know the beds are full and the jails are full, and there's really no record of how many times somebody has been given the Narcan unless they're in the hospital, or maybe you guys have record when you do. But there's not like an overall record. So today, I happened to be at the pharmacy to get Sudafed, and they have a database where anytime you get Sudafed, it's all across the state, and they know if you get it. Is there a way, when you present that legislation, that they can do some type of database to where if somebody's had Narcan a couple times, there can be a 72-hour hold followed by a mandatory treatment to maybe save their lives? I didn't know if that was something that's being done or something that's possible.
We do give Narcan in the jail, but we keep track of that. I'm not sure what the fire department does, how they keep records in that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like if there's an overall, because maybe some people don't know that they had it here, and this person doesn't know they had it there. So if there's like an overall database like that.
There's not a database that's connected.
But I didn't know if it was possible, since Sudafed has one, if it's possible to do something like that, if something they could look into. It's just a thought.
It is at the works, you know, and I didn't have time to mention earlier, but Kent County Detention Center was awarded a $300,000 grant from the federal government this year to be the hub of all of the pre-arrest diversion programs. So we want to support your QRT team coming up. We want to provide you with training and the lock zone and gear. We also have an independent research partner with Northern Kentucky University, who will provide that data in that clearinghouse, so to speak, of information. So when the lock zone is administered at one address, it will be entered into that, into that system, and we can have, we can track those. And then with the new legislation, if it passes, we'll be able to induce that, we'll be able to get them into that court order.
Okay.
That court order. Yeah, I'm sorry for your loss.
Yeah, thank you. My second question is to anybody. I know with addiction, when I went, let me backtrack here. Last year, I was doing the dragon boat races. Have you ever heard of those? So there was a boat that had 12 women on it that were all recovering drug addicts. And they focused all their attention on being on this team, and they did different races everywhere. And I didn't know if you guys incorporate, or if it works, reintroducing a positive addiction to someone who's had a negative addiction. I didn't know if that was something that works or not, or...
There is a team down in Brighton Center. They have, I believe they have a recovery team that works every year with dragon boat racing. So they need a trailer and that group down there.
Maybe, I don't know, over-simplified answer here, you know, when in early recovery and living life sober, when for the last 10 or 15 or 20 years, you haven't gone more than a couple days without being free from the addiction, living life sober can be difficult. And filling that, just that time, or just leisure activities, or just, you know, it might be just as simple as having fun without being involved in the addiction, can be difficult. And sometimes people don't know how to, sometimes you need to learn. The dragon boat things are a great example. And finding sober living activities, just fun, social things, can be difficult. And that's a big part of treatment, and, you know, a big part of what we talk about when we do relapse prevention classes and things like that. So it's a great question. The dragon boat stuff is great, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for everything, you guys.
I was going to say that, too. A lot of, obviously, we deal with women, but a lot of them get frustrated when we make it mandatory that you do 12-step meetings. And really, the reason that you go to 12-step meetings is because you're forming a sober support system, and because you really haven't lived a sober life. You have, you don't know how to laugh sober. You don't know how to go to dinner sober. You don't know, you know, you don't know how to do these activities with other people that are sober. And so you're forming these new relationships with people that are outside of your comfort zone. So, I mean, that's part of your, you know, you're living in a completely different foreign life that you've never lived before. And so that's really part of that whole 12-step, that whole 12-step part of recovery. And that's why it's so important to do that, and to learn how to do new activities.
That's also, with treating adolescents, it's also, a lot of my adolescents do not identify with being in addiction, but they do have a substance use disorder. They're, in my eyes, they're not synonymous, meaning that they are using a substance that's impeding multiple different areas of functioning, but don't identify with losing volitional control. So saying that they still do have a choice and they're choosing it. So an approach that, that I use in my IOP, and there's an intervention called CRA or ACRA for adolescents, which is Community Reinforcement Approach, is you, you do an analysis, a functional analysis on the substance use, and what are the pros, like what are the benefits that you're getting out of the substance use? Because obviously, like, there's benefits, or else, you know, we wouldn't have this issue. And then we, we look at other pro-social activities, and we integrate them into their life. Then you look at that, and you see the risk benefit of those as well. So that's something that, from my perspective, that's kind of how we buffer against addiction, is we kind of take a break, we stop, and we look at these behaviors, and yes, acknowledge the benefit, but also acknowledge the risk, and then also integrate some of these, these pro-social activities, and look at the benefits of those, which typically have a decreased risk. So that's something, especially in the buffering, to go to addiction, because that's, you know, very difficult to treat once you get to the point where you lose that choice, as opposed to, as was mentioned earlier, you know, if someone's experimenting with substance use, that puts them at high, high, high disadvantage and high risk for, you know, long-term use and a crossover into addiction, and a whole lot of different, I guess, decreased positive results. So that's definitely an integration that we look at from that approach as well.
Would it be all right if I ask a question?
Please.
Is there anyone here tonight that does not know about Casey's Law? Oh, everybody does? No? Okay, there's a few hands that do not know. We're talking about...
I've heard people say that, you know, sometimes you need to invoke Casey's Law, and I've never really understood exactly what that meant.
Do I have a few minutes to talk about it?
Yeah.
As we were talking about outreach a few minutes ago, one of the things that I've been doing along with Kimberly Wright, Joan Arlinghaus, and Holly Specht, is traveling around the state, because we've been invited to come and do trainings on Casey's Law. And we would be more than happy to do trainings in Northern Kentucky. I guess, for a long time, we were just under the assumption that because it is working really well in Northern Kentucky, and Boone, Kenton, and Campbell Counties especially, that we really didn't need to do a training on Casey's Law. But I think we probably do, and would welcome the opportunity to do that. In a nutshell, Casey's Law is an involuntary treatment act that allows parents, relatives, and/or friends to petition the court on behalf of someone who has a substance use disorder, regardless of age, and the big thing here, without any criminal charges. And so that was as a result of us losing our son to addiction, to a heroin overdose, and being told, the only advice that we were given was that he had to want to lose enough and hit bottom. What we know, and what we're seeing every day, is that there are a lot of people who are dying before they are able to get help. And one thing I can tell you for sure tonight, absolutely a guarantee, that people have to be alive to recover. And if recovery is our goal, then we have to do everything we can to help that person to find recovery. And Casey's Law can be a big help in doing so. It begins with a petition that is filed with the Circuit Clerk's office, and it needs to be done in the county in which that person is living. And that means, that's where they are. They may not have a permanent address, but wherever they are, you can file that petition. Upon filing the petition, you will be asked to sign a guarantee of payment for treatment. This has been a sticking point for some counties, because they said, well, you know, the people who come to file can't afford it, and so therefore they can't file the petition. The good news is this, we have facilities in our state that are without any cost. The Grateful Life Center is one of those facilities that costs $0. And so if that person is able to get a bed in one of those Recovery Kentucky Centers, then there is no cost. There are other facilities that are accepting the Medicaid that the person has in order to get treatment. So there are options. That's what I want you to hear tonight. There are options. And if you want to know about those options, please pick up a resource guide out in the lobby there that was put together by NKY Hates Heroin, one of the best resources out there. Don't leave here tonight without it. Make sure you have a copy of that. So when you file the petition, they will also set a court date for you within 14 days. And during that 14 days is the time that you need to get evaluations done, and also secure a place for the person to go once the treatment is ordered. Treatment can be ordered for up to a year. And it depends on what is put in the evaluations, and those evaluations have to be done. One has to be done by a doctor, the other one by a qualified health professional. And those evaluations must be done and into the court no later than 24 hours prior to the court date. What we recommend is even before you file the petition, make appointments, make those two appointments, so that you have that in place, and it facilitates the process. I can tell you that Casey's Law does work. It does. It does. I know for a fact that there are people who are living in recovery today in part because of Casey's Law. There are many other factors that go into Casey's Law, or into recovery. But Casey's Law can be a big piece of that, a big part of that. So, I don't know. Hopefully, that's helped a little bit to give you a snapshot of what it is. We have brochures out in the lobby there, and we also have posters that we would love for you to take, if you have a place that you could post it. Libraries, ERs, churches, anywhere that people are going to see it and learn about Casey's Law. Because as that banner over there says, "You need to intervene now. Tomorrow might be too late." And for a lot of people, it has been too late. You know, we were waiting till Casey wanted to, lost enough, and hit that proverbial bottom. He did all of those things, but he died in the process. So, we really can't afford to wait. This is literally a matter of life and death. And while we've been here tonight, I'm sure there have been lives lost while we've been having this meeting here tonight. One other thing I wanted to say, I was, came to the Recovery Center in 2009, when the building opened. And I was in this room when Earl Anger voted to allow us to have that property. So, you know, without Earl Anger, there would be no Grateful Life Center. There would not be that 109 men there tonight that are alive and having the hope of recovery. So, thanks to Earl Anger, and for all the things that they're doing now, because they're not stopping with just that. They're moving forward and doing everything that needs to be done, that they can do, to help with this pandemic, because we're past the level of epidemic. We are at pandemic now. So, are there any questions that I could answer about Casey's Law, now that you have a little information about it? I would be glad to, if you have any. Yes, Holly?
Do you have a Casey's Law loan, is there anyone that can help you? Literally, go there?
Yes. Holly is one of those people. Holly has been one of those people to go with families to court. Kimberly Wright has been another person that can do that. There is, Kimberly runs a group called Kentucky Parents Against Heroin. And also, she is the administrator for me, for Casey's Law. So, those are good Facebook pages that you can go to, to get connected with other people, to help you in the process. And there's always someone that will respond and give you their best advice, their best hope. And we have a lot of people who I'm sure would do just that. Go with you if you need them to, listen to you on the phone for however long it takes for you to tell your story and ask for help. So, and that might not have been what you were thinking, Holly. What were you thinking? Okay, okay. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to talk about Casey's Law, because even after 13 years that the law has been in effect, there are still people who do not know about Casey's Law. And that's kind of mind-boggling for me, that it's been that long, and still, there's some people who do not know about it. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Well, I wanted to thank the panelists and all the speakers for coming out and sharing your resources with us. And if you guys have any additional questions, they'll be outside in the hall. And there's also contact information on the agenda. So, feel free to contact any of us if you have any further questions. Thanks so much for coming out. Have a good night.